Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the School District of the City of Dearborn. Regular meeting Monday, August 18th, 2025, 7:09. We appreciate your patience. We were late in previous meeting. I call this meeting to order. Did we miss the gavel today? We did. So here we go.
Trustee El Jemmi.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Pellicoff.
Here.
Trustee Zaher. Here. President Mosib.
Here. Thank you.
The next item is the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you may have heard in the news since the School District has released a press release, trustee Irene Watts has submitted her resignation from the Board of Trustees effective August 11th due to her moving out of the district. We truly thank her for her service. We will truly miss it on this board. And the state law says that we do have to fill this vacancy within 30 calendar days, and we have started that process already with a press release announcing that the Board of Trustees will be accepting applications, and that deadline will be August 25th at 4:00 p.m. You may visit the school's website to learn more about the opportunity if you are an elector in Dearborn. And also, you may submit your application either online. There is a link online on DearbornSchools.org, or you could submit your application, your resume, your three references, and the letter of interest to the office here at Tanite Building. We will truly miss trustee Watts on the board. Trustee Barry?
Yes, yeah, I'm also thankful for Irene Watts, former trustee. She did a wonderful job. She, just like we miss certain board members for what they excelled in, she excelled in policy. She kept us in line a lot of times. President Mosib, want to make a statement. This might not be a surprise to most of my colleagues. I've spoken to them before, but the process that we had is not a fun process to replace. It didn't serve us too well. I've always advocated to change it. There was no support for that. So out of respect for this board, I was planning to resign probably soon, but I think it would be, at this point, it would be a good idea since the process already started. You have one interview, and now, you know, I'd end up putting together, adding two more additions. So as of midnight tonight, I will send you a formal resignation of the school board, Dearborn School Board, and Henry Ford Board of Trustees.
Well, thank you for that, trustee Barry. That was surprising, but...
No, I've talked to some of my colleagues. I mean, I've hinted that, obviously, you know what I'm doing next year and...
Absolutely, by the way.
I didn't want to wait to go through this process. It will be an ugly process. I mean, we lived it, okay? And then have you go through it again two, three months from now. So I will send you an email with a formal resignation.
Thank you, trustee Barry. Any other commentary? Thank you. No? Next item, please.
Next item is, next item is the Superintendent's Update.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to welcome everyone back. We officially start next Monday with a half day of school. Plans have been well underway, getting ready for the start of the school year with the students. I know they're very excited. Our teams have been meeting. There's a lot of professional development going on. And so, you know, the first day of school is my second favorite time of the year. My favorite is graduation, but the first day to see the excitement, you know, some of the anxiety on parents and on students, but to support them through that. And so, we're really excited to get the buildings open and have them back, and our entire team has been working very hard. I'm going to go down the list here. I have Ms. Shaheen, the new Executive Director of Student Achievement. I'm going to call her up. She wasn't able to make it last month because of death in the family, and our thoughts and prayers were with her at that time, and they still are. And we'll let her come up and say a few words to the board. She was approved last month. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the honor and the privilege to return home to Dearborn Public Schools. I'm a proud product of Big Worth K8 and Fortson Go Tractors. This has been my first official week. I started last week on Wednesday officially, and the very first day, I was before middle school and high school administrators and intervention of colleges. And I have to tell you, the experience that I had, being that it was my very first day, I had first aid jitters, looking out into that crowd, the support, the kindness, the love, the response they gave me was so powerful. I felt so welcome, and it was just truly heartwarming. And that's just indicative of Dearborn Public School staff, a whole slew of professionals. And I get the great privilege of working with this amazing team. So thank you for the honor and the privilege. I'm so excited to be back home.
Congratulations. I'll just go along. I also want to mention retirement. I normally do at the beginning. And Margaret Earl, 25 years of service. Thank her for her years of service, and let's congratulate her on her retirement as well. Teacher professional development starts in two days from today. We've got a lot going on this week, and I know we also got the welcome back picnic coming up on Thursday if any board trustees want to. It's back at the Henry Ford, excuse me, Ford Field. It used to be, I know, at Dearborn High, but we've moved it. But we have a whole array of professional developments and meetings that are going on all week as we're providing support for our teachers to provide support for our students. So we're excited to welcome our teachers back as well. Wanted to mention something on the state and federal funding. You know, we heard the positive last month with the release of the Title II, III, and IV. I know this board passed a resolution. We still do not have a state budget. Through the meetings I've been in, I'm hearing the word potential shutdown is some of the word, what I'm hearing. You know, it does not help school districts, Dearborn schools, all districts. Our associations have come out strongly. I know the Michigan Department of Education and others saying we need a budget. You know, we appreciate the work of our legislators that work in Dearborn, and they're very supportive. But on a state level, it makes it very difficult for school districts not knowing the funding sources that are coming and the uncertainty. I haven't seen this in quite a while, and so we're hoping that the state is able to pass a budget and, you know, we'll have plans in place. We always do. We're fiscally responsible under leadership of Mr. Wall with you, the board. But right now, it's not a good situation at the state level. And again, appreciate the support of the board. We do not want to see money, a billion dollars diverted out of the school aid fund for roads or any other thing. And so, we believe that money is there for the students, and so we'll keep you apprised. But right now, it's at a standstill up there in Lansing. Wanted to mention potential bond. Our groups have been meeting, our one-on-one meetings with Byron Fisk are almost complete, and then I know surveying and other aspects of involvement with the community. I know that David Mustin said that this consulting group said we had a very intensive plan to make sure we're really out there listening to the community. We know we need it, but we also know we need to gather support and get the input of the community. So there is more to come. I know as, you know, we return in the fall. We don't want to do a lot in the summer because people aren't around. We want to make sure we engage the community, so there is more to come on that end as well. I do have a few others that I wanted to mention. I know I talked to President Mosib in the tribute for Mr. Baydoun. I believe we're looking at next month. I think there were some compromises and some, you know, ultimately be up to the board, but we're looking at next month for that. I wanted to mention as well Irene Watts and trustee Barry. Well, it's been, it's been a pleasure working with you over many, many years in different capacities, and the same with Irene Watts. I want to thank her for her dedication, and I know, you know, we're in it for the students, and so we appreciate your service to the students of the Dearborn Public Schools. And then I do want to mention for me, I know I put out a letter tomorrow morning. I do have an interview for state superintendent. I'm one of seven candidates. I appreciate the support of the board. I love working in Dearborn. I'm going on 30 years here. Dearborn will always be a part of me if I am fortunate enough to achieve this position or get to the next round or work together with the board, with the state board. I will continue to work hard for Dearborn schools and Dearborn students. But I'm, you know, it's something I needed to try. I'm dedicated to Dearborn. I'm not looking to go anywhere else, and I love working here in this district. So I want to thank the board. I want to thank the, I had an outpouring of support from the community and messaging when I did announce that application. So I just want to thank the entire Dearborn community for getting behind me with that. And so, you know, we're in it for the students and to advocate, and I've been doing that on a state and national level for Dearborn students, for Michigan students, and if I get that job, we'll continue to do so. So thank you so much. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Milico. We truly appreciate your service as well, and we wish you well in your interview. Next item, please.
Next item is recognition and acknowledgement.
We only have acknowledgement of donations.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Acknowledgement of donations.
Yeah. Mr. Rohr, are you doing that? Donations? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Just one donation today. A donation of fresh fruits, vegetables, goody bags, and canned goods has been offered to Long Elementary School by Eternal Light to be given to students and families at Long Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank the donor for their generous donations. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Finance Committee meeting, July 28th, 2025, Board Report 25-13. Building and Site Committee meeting, July 28th, 2025, Board Report 25-14. And the regular P to 12 meeting, July 28th, 2025, Board Report 25-15. Looking for someone to make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved. Moved by trustee Barry, supported by trustee D'Ambrosio. Any corrections to the minutes? Thank you. Seeing that, attach a unanimous roll to this motion?
Please.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is union leadership commentary. It looks like none of them are here.
Perfect. We can go to the next item.
Next item is Special Reports, Summer School Update by Ms. Mesa Malik Bezi.
Initiative and super close to my heart, and you'll see why. Huge gigantic thank you to the Ballmer Group and United Way. We received a grant, I applied, and we received a grant for nearly $8 million. This is our second summer in a row receiving this grant. I guess I'm going to do this. Okay, here we go. So it's funded by the Ballmer Group and United Way. So in 2024, we had 3,600 students enrolled, near about $7.1 million. And in 2025, we had 4,000 students enrolled and just about $8 million. And we are 99%, oh, about 90% sure we'll have the grant for a third year, and we're aiming for the stars with our enrollment. Summer Discovery, some of the grant requirements is that include that it has to be an eight-hour a day program, 20 to 25 days of instruction. In '24, we had 25 days, and in '20, this last summer, we had 24 days. It must include 90 minutes of literacy and 90 minutes of math. It has to have teachers certified in ELA, English Language Arts and Math, teaching the core areas. And the enrichment has to be fun, engaging, and exciting, and that's why the grant provides so much funding. Enrichment, parent, family engagement. All of our 18 sites where we held Summer Discovery had two parent engagement, family engagement events, and it's required to have a student pre and post survey and a pre and post assessment. And as much as we don't want to assess students any more than we already do, it's a brief 10 to 12 question assessment, which is required by the grant. What was new for 2025, our rising ninth grade students, so that's our, the kids that were in eighth grade last year and starting ninth grade this year, attended a five-hour program, which was approved by the grant, and they earned high school credit. So before they even officially start high school, they've now had the opportunity to earn high school credit. The sixth graders, the rising sixth graders, so all the kids that were in fifth grade were, had the opportunity to begin their transition to middle school earlier and attend the middle school, in most cases, the middle school that they'll be attending this fall. So for example, the students attending Bryant came, attended Bryant this summer are the incoming sixth graders from Howard, Hague, Lindbergh, and some of the roads, for example. That's how we organized it. So they have a jumpstart on their transition to middle school. Last year, we did not adopt a curriculum. We extended the regular school year curriculum, but this year, we did adopt a curriculum. And last year, we had, for all the grades, kindergarten through eighth grade, and last year, we had the Lit Lab curriculum only for first and second graders, Rising K through Rising Second. And this year, we had adopted a curriculum for all the grades except for the Rising Ninth because they followed the high school credit courses. So those are all the new things. Oh, and most importantly, we added field trips. Some pictures you'll see here. We had the exotic zoo, Zee the Cook. We had the nutty scientist, Kona Ice, the laughing factory assembly, hype athletics. We also had, I'm going faster than my slides. We discussed the curriculum, Lit Lab. Lavinia is the name of the curriculum. Teachers receive professional development on that curriculum as well. And the ninth grade for credit courses. Some more pictures. You'll see we have cardio drumming here. Art was a huge hit. Music was a huge hit, and the buildings that didn't have a full-time music person had about four different teachers that were rotating from buildings to buildings doing the cardio drumming. You'll see in the one picture on the upper left. PE, gardening, steam. We had one dead Becky teacher, Ms. Meyer. Shout out to Liz Meyer. She is one of our many, many stars. She was rotating buildings, providing the dead Becky lesson, spending a week with each group of students. We had a theater, we had theater offered in some programs. I went to a play at McCullough-UNIS. And then we even had a board game room because these days, kids don't know how to play board games, and it actually is a great skill for kids to have. And so this gave them an opportunity to enjoy that as well. Some of the field trips included the Detroit Riverboat Cruise, and I will say, by the end of the summer, the Riverboat Cruise was no longer working. So we pushed it to the end of its life, and hopefully they'll have a new boat next year. We had the Zap Zone, Revved Up, Detroit Institute of Arts, Blake's Orchard, High Velocity, Turtle Cove. And you'll see some pictures here. That's the riverboat, looks like Turtle Cove, and either Revved Up or High Velocity or Zap Zone in that other picture. We're going to have some data really soon, and when I have the data, I'll provide it to the board via board briefs or board requests for information. But what I can tell you without any data is that 4,000 kids were actively engaged in academic and social activities. 4,000 kids were not sitting on the couch playing with technology. 4,000 kids experienced something new this summer, and 4,000 kids were engaged in positive interactions with safe and inspiring adults. Few more pictures. A very special thank you to all of the Dearborn team, the teachers. We had 250 teachers. We had, I don't have the number, but we had quite a few non-instructional staff. Our transportation department was amazing. Our clerical staff pulled through. Our communications department, we'll have a video for you next month. Our payroll department and our HR department, it was, oh, and of course, technology. It was truly all hands on deck. Many districts do not want the funding because of the work that comes with it, but our team embraces every opportunity, no matter how much work is involved, and that is why we are able to do what we do. Any questions?
Trustee Pellicoff.
Of course.
Am I supposed to call on you? I'm sorry. I'm not supposed to.
President Mosib also said that.
I got in teacher mode. Sorry.
I waited. Okay. A quick question because I need a refresher on this. Are all, all the elementary schools are not participating?
They are all eligible, but if a building had less than 100 enrollments, then I combined them with other buildings because it's a lot more fun that way.
Well, my question would be, like, I have a neighborhood student who already has struggled with some absenteeism because he doesn't have, his parents are not comfortable with him walking to the local elementary school on his own, and he was relying upon some other family friends to drive him there, and when they didn't show up, he would just be at home, playing out in the yard and whatever. I finally asked him, I said, why are you not in school? He could have really benefited, I suspect, from having his day occupied not sitting on the couch kind of activity. But wouldn't have had transportation, especially if the school building wasn't the one he would have been assigned to.
Right.
Especially if it was further away. Did we have transportation for students out of their neighborhood school?
We did. We had transportation, well, everyone had to stick within their home schools, so they're within the boundaries of the schools that they normally go to, so we stayed with that structure. And then we had transportation. So if a student is eligible for transportation during the regular school year, then they were eligible for transportation during the Summer Discovery program. And then if I, for example, Smith did not host a program because they had the lower enrollment, but if I attended Smith, then I would, and if I take a bus to Smith, then I would get a bus ride to Smith, pick up the Smith kids that walk to Smith, and then take them over to Stout. So there was some complex transportation organized.
Okay. Was that communicated to, I'm not sure whether my local elementary school participated or not to begin with.
Yeah.
So, and I'm not going to call anybody out.
Yeah.
But if they did not, was it communicated to the families that there was still an opportunity for them to participate at the next, the next school in the area that was hosting?
Oh, absolutely. So every school sent out, every one of our schools sent out registration forms that had all that information on there.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. But if ever, please feel free to contact me. I'll call the parent.
I'd like to make sure everybody takes advantage because these opportunities might be not so plentiful in the future. So I would like to see every child have that advantage of occupying their summer with something fruitful and not boring.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we continued enrolling a week into the program. Any other questions?
No, we'll look forward to the data. So great job. Yeah, summer program is amazing.
Thank you very much.
Share it on social media. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for actions who are signed in by 7:10 or 10 minutes after we start by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. And we have two cards. Chair Mosib, President Mosib. The first one is, sorry if I say this wrong, Scott Zalkowski. Did I say it right?
Zalkowski.
Zalkowski, sorry, man.
That's okay.
Zalkowski.
Mr. Zalkowski, you can come forward.
Scott Zalkowski.
Zalkowski, that's the silent. Thank you. Good evening. I was just wanting an update, if there is one, on the athletic trainer situation.
Athletic trainer situation, yeah, for sure.
Because we're at the 11th hour now. All the fall seasons are starting. You know, we have boys, girls, all three levels, hundreds of athletes that are depending on these people.
Yeah. I am very certain that the administration has been working hard to work on the athletic trainer situation. Dr. Milico does have an update. I just want to mention that this wasn't definitely the district's fault. This was Henry Ford Systems, unfortunately, backing out of their contract, and we had, like other districts, also scrambled for resources. So, Dr. Milico, where are we with athletic trainers?
Yeah, Ms. Ali Bezi can actually come.
How are you?
Good.
Nice to see you again. I thought it was you. We were on an interview committee together. So I am excited to say and thankful to say that we have hired one athletic trainer. One athletic trainer is not enough for our three high school needs.
Correct.
I'm in the process of getting a contract with Plymouth Physical Therapist. That's what they do, is that you contract their athletic trainers. The plan is to contract them for at least six weeks just to give me time to get two more, one or two more positions. I'm waiting on confirmation of funding for at least a second athletic trainer with the potential of enough funding for a third trainer, but that's just going to take time. Our other challenge, and you can let me know if you have anyone in mind, is that it's very difficult to find people that have the athletic trainer certification. And so I have to be very careful because the company that I'm going to be contracting the physical, the athletic trainers from, Plymouth Physical Therapy, that's what it's called, if they find, if we find someone that we like, we can't just hire them because that's stealing their employee, and those employees have contracts with that company. So we are actively, oh, I also messaged in the short, immediately when we knew this was going to be a challenge, all the physical therapists that we employ to see if anyone would be willing to work for extra pay to help us get through this period. But it is urgent. It's on our radar, and we take it serious.
That's great to hear, but the thing that worries me with only one athletic trainer is, you know, I think it's two dates, September 5th and then October 27th. All three high schools play at the same time, and that's just football, that's the thing, including all these other sports. I don't know how they're going to be there.
So we do have a plan to, our Danielle Alzayat, our Health and Safety Director, she plans on reaching out to the local EMS to see if we could have an EMS present onsite for those days when there's an overlap and we haven't sorted things out yet.
Okay.
Just to keep them onsite. So that will probably cost us, but it's well worth the investment.
Sure.
We're happy to do so. So we're hoping that, I haven't confirmed that, but I will keep you, I will keep you and everyone in the board posted.
Okay. I go, I just want to say one thing. I go to every practice, I watch my son play. Last year, a young man would have died if it wasn't for the efforts of an athletic trainer and a coach who happened to be a police officer.
Yeah.
He had a, he got hit in the chest. They brought him back to life. I mean, it's beyond urgent that this has to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing.
Thank you. We do recognize that, the importance of having athletic trainers. So trustees are?
So just to make it clear to Mr. Zalkowski, am I saying it right now? Okay. Just to make it clear to him, you, the administration is committing to, whether it's through contractors or EM, whatever, you're committing to make sure that there's adequate athletic trainers at all of our events.
Yeah, we have plans for the game. Regardless, there's definitely going to be medical staff on hand during the games.
Okay.
Okay. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Nicole Elrabia. Rabia, Rabia?
Elrabia.
Elrabia?
Elrabia.
Okay, sorry. Nicole Elrabia.
I'm actually here to piggyback on what Scott mentioned about the athletic trainer.
Yeah.
Sorry. I'm not very well at public speaking, so excuse me. My son actually passed out Friday at practice. I don't even know he passed out until the coaches were on some on the floor. Hit his head pretty good. Thankfully, went to the ER, was fine, but in that circumstance, if Kelly or another athletic trainer would have been there, he would have been tended to. He would have been sat up, given hydration, checked to see if he had concussion, whatever the case may be. The coaches had to leave the other children. So everybody's focused on my son, where they should be focused on what they're doing and not concerned with an emergency. Thankfully, it was an emergency. He was severely dehydrated. He's fine. But what Scott said about athletic trainer being so important at the games is beyond what I can say. My son's been hurt multiple times at football. Our previous athletic trainer, Kelly, did so much for my son, always had him taped, always had him wrapped. The kids were always able to go to her, speak to her. She communicated very well with the parents. I cannot impress upon you how important it is. how important it is to have somebody there for our children. Because God forbid something bad happens to them and we could have prevented it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. No, no more speakers. So our next item is board follow-up.
Yes, no more speakers.
I know from last meeting, we did have many presidents address us on the dedication for Hageju's Baydun. And we appreciate the work that has been done behind the scenes to reach a consensus. I want to name Mr. Jayad Baydun for his work in, in getting us to a good recommendation coming to the board in September. Any other follow-up from other trustees? Okay, next item, please.
Next item is action items. Special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we'll exclude these from the motion below. So I'm looking for a motion to approve all of the action items on the agenda with the exception of any items which have, which will be excluded from this motion by board member request.
Motion moved.
Motion moved by trustee Petlicov, supported by trustee Di Ambrosio. I don't hear any exclusions for any items. So any, any questions on any of the action items? Seeing none, I attach a unanimous roll to this motion.
Please.
Thank you. Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item.
Summary.
Oh, summary.
Summary's at the end, right?
Thanks.
Okay. So, the summary of the agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants per Board Report 25-16. Number two, approval of an award to Burlington English Incorporated. Number three, approval of an award to Henry Ford College. Number four, approval of change orders. Number five, approval of an award to Amplify per Board Report 25-17. Number six, approval of an award to Pearson. Number seven, approval of an award to Apple Stores for Education. Number eight, approval of an award to Access. Number nine, approval of an award to Agile Sports. Numbers 10 through 12, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 13, approval of financial statement. Number 14, approval of summer school graduates per Board Report 25-22. Number 15, approval of policy update change per Board Report 25-23. And number 16, approval of donations.
Join, I mentioned your name. We're having a side conversation here. They're trying to move quickly to break my record. They're not going to. You're just not going to do that. Don't, you're not even close. You're already past it.
Okay, next. Board of Education business. A, acknowledgement of correspondence.
We have received a lot of correspondence about the athletic trainers, and I've responded to nearly all of them. I believe I still have one more to go. But we truly, we, we, I, I do personally have high school or play in football, and it's a highly combat sport. And we do definitely know the importance of athletic trainers on the field when these games are happening. So I, I can't stress enough that the administration is working hard to get those athletic trainers hired or contracted and be available throughout the game. So we do have a game planned for that. Any other correspondence? We acknowledge. Next item.
What was the record? B, Board Member Committee and Organization Report.
We did have a meeting for the superintendent evaluation before this meeting, which will be approved next meeting. I do not recall we, we did have other board committee reports? No. So we did not have any to, to report. Next item, please. Oh, trustee Di Ambrosio.
Yeah, I, I was at the Dearborn Education Foundation Organizational Board Meeting last week.
Okay.
And basically, they went through, you know, all the things that they're putting on the board for this year. But I'd like to highlight a few things as far as fundraiser, fundraisers go. You know, they have their golf, their Mardi Gras, their green, green tie raffle. The golf is September 22nd. The big shot raffle drawing is at the golf outing. The Mardi Gras is February 10th. And the green tie date is to be determined, but it will be going back to Bebelows this year.
Thank you, trustee Di Ambrosio, for that report. Next item, please.
Next item is Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee Petlicov.
I just wanted to add that Goodfellas will be having their Smoke on the Grill, which is also a fundraiser opportunity, September 9th or 19th. I look on the Goodfellas website because I can't offhand. We usually see a little more advertisement in the room than we have of late, but they're also, tickets are $35. They're very family-friendly. I think the kids' tickets are $5. And they have a furnace raffle for $5 if you need a new furnace. You want to try, try your luck. So I just wanted to give them a shout-out as well.
I'm pulling it up now, just so.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's September 13th.
Yeah, September 13th.
13, 4 p.m.
13th.
At Ford Field.
Ford, 8 p.m. at Ford Field.
Yeah. Trustee Barry.
Yes, I know the back-to-school picnic for the employees was mentioning for Thursday, mentioned earlier on Thursday. But we also, this weekend, have the back-to-school fair that the PTA will be holding. That's Saturday, August 23rd, from 12 p.m. to 3 p.m. at Ford Field, the large pavilion. That's the north one.
Yeah, they got rained out last year practically.
Don't jinx them.
No, it's supposed to be good weather.
I promise, Nabil.
It's supposed to be good weather.
I promised President Nabil that I would be grilling the hamburgers.
Yeah.
Okay, then.
But I can't. Sorry, Nabil. I'll be reached out to you just in case. I got a family wedding. It's a holiday thing. So that's Saturday at Ford Field, 12 to 3. Great event.
Absolutely. Always a great event. Any other correspondence? Trustees are.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I believe that trustee Barry just started talking to prolong the meeting.
It's already, it's already done. The O.
You pass it? Oh, ma'am. But, no, just to say thank you to trustee Barry and for his service to us, his mentorship to me personally.
It's not official.
I'm sorry?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. And, you know, this is, wish you best of luck. It's obviously sad for all of us, but thank you for everything you did for us.
Thank you for sharing that.
Trustee Petlicov.
And I also want to say trustee Watts and trustee Barry, because I've served with both of them from the beginning to the end, I guess. Now, I'm the last one standing. I, I, no, I'm not going. I won't put in my resignation. Make it more difficult for you all. But yes, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Working with you all these years. I, I, I was working with you before you, we were working on the board. Way back in the early 2000s. So we've shared a long history.
Not going far. We'll be working together, hopefully. If you're willing, we'll be, we'll be representing.
I understand. And trustee Watts, she did leave. So we, we won't be seeing her around town anymore, but it was great. And I hate being the last woman standing here. But we'll see how things change.
Trustees are.
I do want to thank trustee Barry. I've known him for a long time, and he's been a mentor. You know, me coming into the board, you'll be missed. It was a surprise for me. Maybe I saw it coming, but I still, it was a surprise. And we're going to miss you. We're going to miss your expertise and your knowledge. But hopefully, we could still call you.
Anytime.
So we, we will miss you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
Trustees are.
So just so I understand, and so that everybody understands, are we then going to use the process, the, the application, that process that closes on August 25th for both of these positions?
David, I think, I think that would be a good idea. That was my intention.
Are you, are you, did you say effective midnight?
Midnight tonight.
Okay. So.
His clock's a little bit late.
I, I hope, I hope trustee Barry can still reconsider his resignation.
He can reconsider his resignation. I, I want, well, sorry.
But if he, if he does something there.
I, I don't know whether, I don't know what the rules are, whether somebody can resign and, and say, you know, I'm, I'm announcing my resignation effective a month from now, and then we can still seek somebody for that? And then that trustee can.
No, 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 no.
We looked into that, can't.
Okay, great.
Bylaws are very clear.
Okay. So that means, so is it then, are you going to close this August 25th for both? And then we'll have a special meeting for, and interview people for, and not for both, I mean, we'll be interviewing for two positions and do it all in one meeting? Is that going to be the plan, then?
Well, it, it's actually.
That's the way I imagine it. It's up to.
Yeah, we can definitely check just for legal purposes, that we, we still have to post. We could move the goal line for the existing position, or we could say, you know, once we post another vacancy, again, the clock starts from that time.
But our, our clock is still.
Right, but we still have to appoint one.
Within that 30 calendar day.
Yeah, by September 11th.
Right.
Or September 10th, depending.
10th, yeah.
So, and then if trustee Barry's still resigning tonight, then we would have to fill in that vacancy by September 17th.
Well, and that's, that's correct. However, there's no, from what I understand.
There is no.
There's no, there's no, we have to do it within 30 days or else the county does it.
Yeah.
But there's no minimum amount of time. So in other words.
No.
So in other words, we could say to the community, hey, the app, trust, if trustee Barry still resigns, the trust, the, that trustee Barry resigned, and, and August 25th is the closing application date for that one, too. Like, we could say, there's nothing wrong with it.
When I, when I was president and we had an appointment, it was a seven-day window for the applications to be taken.
Yeah, we, we determined that.
Yeah.
So I would, I would urge you to do that, which is, so that we can do, because what's the point?